All right. About 5:30, let's call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our agenda for tonight after that is just simply roll call and to approve the agenda. So let's go through roll call, please.
I'm Steve Ferrin.
Here.
Carol Hong Kong.
Here.
Jay Jones.
Here.
Lexi Murphy.
And Gina Grau.
Here.
Okay, we have four of them. And our next item is to approve the agenda. There is an edit to the agenda in item 13. It's Treatment 1, which doesn't really change the effectiveness of the item, but we wanted to make sure it was clarified.
Oh, instead of Distribution 1?
Distribution 1 and Treatment 1, not 2. Treatment 1, there won't flood. That was my bad. All right, so we have, that's not really a change in the action needed, so we don't need an amendment, I don't believe. Is there anything else we need to change on that? Okay. So we just need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Hi Gina. Gina has made the motion and Jay has seconded to approve what the next agenda has presented. Do we have any other discussion or concerns? Mary Nunn will call for a vote in favor of approving the agenda for tonight. Say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. The muralized motion carried, agenda approved. To begin tonight, we have a presentation that's making. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, boy, maybe. Let's use this, where's this? Was it all right? Okay, try again, anything louder?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Not as good as I want. Why is that right there? All right, well, we might have to try that. He doesn't want to shoot it.
Okay, did the guy speak up?
Yes, loud as you can.
He's cutting off the TV. Can you just turn the volume up?
It's good, is it?
I'm in the office by myself. Won't be disturbing you by the waters, so I can speak loudly.
Okay?
Not working?
Say it a little louder?
It's not on.
Yeah, it's only on here. Okay, well, we can't hear you on the big TV unfortunately, but.
You're muted right now, I think, guys.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
There's an unmute button.
That's just, yeah, there you go. All right, we're back. We can't hear you off the TV sound, so you'll have to be extra loud.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. And are you ready for meeting to get started?
Yes. Try to make it louder.
Um, not entirely sure. I mean, sometimes in my Zoom settings, I can turn up the volume a little bit.
Somebody else feels like you're chiming in.
Your toolbar right there.
Your toolbar.
Oh, there is a volume.
So, is there like a horn up there?
A horn.
Try that, try it. Is that something?
Get your microphone off somehow here.
Brenda, do you have a Bluetooth speaker here?
I do not. Do you want to have one?
I have one on your phone.
On your phone. Does that make it louder, though?
You've got a Bluetooth speaker, you can connect to your computer.
Only go here?
Yes, I got one up, I got one up the office.
You know how to do it, you can use it online.
Is the computer, Brenda, can you check your audio settings on the app? And see.
It's on there.
Yeah, that you can see what your source is for your app?
Yes. That's what I was just looking at right there. It just says the source is Fire TV, but it won't do a microphone.
Ah. That's probably the problem then.
It doesn't have a microphone, that's true.
That'd be why.
We can hear you, but we can't, yeah.
How are you feeling? Did you get that?
Right. So if we switch it to Fire TV, we won't be able to talk to him. He'll just have to talk to us.
But it still isn't giving him voice there. It's still not there. We had it earlier, Brenda.
I know, yeah, we had it earlier.
You had it on?
Yeah, we were just kind of on the TV earlier.
Sorry, I'm going to mess with something here. A second, Mikey. Give us some background.
So what's this guy?
It's right over there.
Still reached your mic, oh, yes. What else did I see there?
I think it's Zoom that's overpowering what the TV has. Yeah, so you can let me change volume in here.
Can we record it? And then if we need to go back and.
This was a lot ago.
Well, yeah, but we record as we go. Record it and recreate it. Well, do it now still, then, if anyone needs to go back.
The microphone input. You just can't change it to Fire TV.
Well, you want the microphone to stay on the computer then.
Yeah.
But you need to change the speakers.
It says it's on Fire TV. That's still, so that's why we can hear it there. And on, it's not different.
Weird.
Yeah.
Output's on Fire TV.
Yeah, output's on Fire TV. Display board output volume we can't control, so. All right, well, Mikey, that's what we got here. We have a microphone, we can stick it in.
Yeah, so does it sound good enough?
Yeah, that's good enough.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can hear you.
Well, and I can hear you guys fine too, so just, um, let me know if it's drab or on or anything like that. Don't press stop if you need to. Just use the chat to, whatever you're running the Zoom there on your end. This is a presentation that I've given a bunch of times. And happy to take questions as we go. Sorry, did somebody?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. So I know the nature of this complaint is related to open meetings. The presentation I have that I sent to the city has open records guidance in it as well, which we won't talk about tonight. Now, we just include it for these sessions, just in case anyone there wants to guide in open records as well. But again, the main focus will be on open meetings and all the guidance on that and both the state code and we'll also talk about some best practices too. So again, if you have any questions at any point, feel free to unmute or chime in or just use the chat anyway, works for me, no bother at all. To put it, the open meetings portion of this training will really cover largely just the basics of the state code of Iowa and will give us some best practices as well. And we'll talk about violations. It takes about 30 to 40 minutes to go through this, but again, let me know if anything comes up as I go through the slides. So start out with the basics of the state, of the open meetings law, Chapter 21 of the state code. As you know, I'm sure you all know that the main idea, of course, with all governmental bodies out there is to make your decisions in an open, transparent fashion. And the way you do that, of course, is with your withholding your meetings in an open public forum. One thing that we always stress with this basic foundational type thing, the state code, is that any ambiguity, if there's any questions about whether this, that, or the other thing should be done in an open, transparent fashion, usually the answer is yes, it should be. You know, you're working in a governmental capacity and the whole idea is that you're making your decisions in a public light. So that's just always something to keep in mind. Again, if there's any questions about whether we should do this as an open meeting, da, 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 like yes, probably should it. So what is a meeting? Again, I mean, most people can just apply some common sense to this, but sometimes things get a little nuanced. And so from the basic standpoint, a meeting is a gathering of a majority of your governmental body, which for city governments, the city council, every city out there has a city council. And so any gathering of a majority or a forum of the city council is going to be considered a meeting. Now, traditionally speaking, of course, that is a meeting in person, where you're at City Hall, the council chambers, and you're there with the quorum of the council and you're going to do a meeting. But the state code also recognizes that it can be an electronic meeting or meeting via electronic means, which of course with COVID, that forced a lot of governmental bodies, many city councils, to use electronic meetings. But even before COVID, there were examples of cities meeting via electronic means, which most often meant one individual council member calling in or using a video conference to join an in-person meeting. And we'll talk about that more in a little bit. But those also count. That's all, that's the main point to take away, is that if you have a quorum of your city council together, whether it's in person or whether it's via electronic means, and you're discussing city business, that is a council meeting. Okay, that's the biggest thing to take away from this kind of basic definition. And it can be formal, like a regularly scheduled council meeting, but it could be informal. And the other point to this is whether there's deliberation or action. Okay, that's the other piece of it. Because the other, the definition includes what is not a meeting. It does not include a social gathering or gathering for ministerial reason, ministerial, it's kind of an old terminology, but basically, you have a quorum of the council when you're there to basically do a ribbon cutting or take a, do a photo op of some sort. That is not a formal meeting if you're not discussing city business. You're there for the handshake, the ribbon cutting, the photo op, but you're not going to discuss any city business whatsoever. That is not a governmental meeting, it's not a city council meeting, even if you have a quorum. The same is true if you have a quorum or a majority of your council for social reasons. I've heard of all kinds of things out there, but common examples would be you have, on the five-member council, of course, three members as a quorum. You have three council members that show up at a high school football game together or at a grocery store or at the local tap. And it just happens to us that three of you are in the same room, are at the same ballgame together, and does that mean it's a council meeting? No, it does not. You can be together for social reasons. Heck, we've got councils out there that have family members, cousins, that serve on the city council together, and they may have a family reunion in the summertime. And you know, obviously, they're at the same place, can they still be together? Yes, but they cannot discuss city business. So that's the biggest thing. If you're running to each other at any one of those social events, you just, you've got to acknowledge, okay, you can say hi, but you cannot discuss any business. Cannot deliberate, you certainly cannot vote outside of a formal council meeting. That's the big number. So what is a governmental body? Again, as a civic board, every city out there has a city council. That's always going to be the prime example at our level of government. City governments also have a number of boards and commissions, subcommittees of the council and so on, that in large part are also going to be considered a governmental body under the state code of Iowa. And that's because of this second bullet point on your screen there. An advisory board, commission, task force, there's any number of groups that the city council appoints or creates or is a subcommittee of the city council itself. And the whole idea is that they're expected to study some kind of issue and provide some kind of public policy recommendation to the city, to the city council itself. The most, the common examples that you can see here on this next screen would be utility boards, library boards, very common, zoning commissions for cities that have zoning, boards of adjustment, and the larger cities have even more than all this and plenty more than this. And for the most part, every single one of them aren't going to be considered a governmental body because if you go back to this definition, almost all of the boards and commissions and committees and subcommittees, the whole idea is that they study some issue related to the city government and they issue some kind of recommendation, public policy recommendation. If so, they're a governmental body and their meetings also have to be considered a open meeting. And they have to follow all the open meetings laws, just like the city council does. I often get the question, what if they don't have a quorum of the city council? It's a council subcommittee, and we have a personnel subcommittee where we have two council members that are tasked with helping us with personnel and human resources type issues. Because they have less than a quorum, are they still subject to the open meetings laws? And I say yes, because of this second bullet point. Almost all of them are, the whole purpose is they're going to study some issue or do some homework of some sort and come back to the council with a recommendation, public policy recommendation. So yes, even though there's less than a quorum, they must be considered a governmental body. The open meetings laws apply to them. Any questions there? Okay, that one trips up some cities quite a bit. So again, let me know if you have any questions as we go. So for your council meetings and any of these other boards and commissions that are considered a governmental body, the open meetings laws apply. And then one of the biggest things is you must provide public notice for any and all types of meetings. For city councils, that of course means irregular meetings, but many councils also hold council work sessions, special meetings, as you may need them throughout the year. So anytime the council needs to get together and discuss and deliberate and vote upon city business, you must first provide notice to the public as required by the state code here. What does that notice mean? It must be posted at a prominent place. The prominent place has largely been defined as the location of your council meetings or your governmental body meetings. And that notice must be provided at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Also must be provided, it must be provided to any media who requested such notice. And then the notice itself needs to include time, date, and place, of course, and a tentative agenda. We'll talk about the agenda as we go. We might as well stop here and give a little guidance on the agenda itself. The agenda must be detailed enough. The state code says tentative, but it's really kind of a missed number because the agenda needs to be really locked down and final when it's posted, once you get to that 24-hour notice window. Up until 24 hours, you can post and revise or amend an agenda, which is fairly common. You know, somebody notices that we forgot to include this bill to pay or we forgot to include this contract to approve. Can we get, can we get the agenda corrected? Yeah, you can, as long as you put up a new agenda at least 24 hours ahead of the meeting time. Okay, that's the biggest thing. 24 hours after that, you cannot add anything to the agenda. You can take things off, you can reorder the agenda, but you cannot add anything unless it's an emergency. And this gets us into kind of the emergency clause of the state code. And the only time you can really hold an emergency meeting or add something to a posted agenda within 24 hours is for good cause, which is for an emergency. And there's no definition of emergency in state code. The Iowa Public Information Board and plenty of attorneys have advised cities, it better be a true emergency, it better be, you know, the city is responding to a natural disaster and we cannot possibly wait 24 hours because there is a potential loss of life or damage to property, including city property. And so we just, there's no, you know, we cannot wait 24 hours. We've got to be right now or we've got to add this item to be a agenda for tonight because it's a true emergency, we're responding to this. So that's the only time you would really see a city violating the 24-hour notice and hold a posted meeting or add an agenda item within 24 hours. So some other basic requirements here. Again, it's a lot of common sense, but we always have to stress it, that your meetings must be held in an open session. You go to closed session, which we'll get to next. There are very few reasons you can use a closed session, but we'll talk about that. Otherwise, all of your business has to be done in an open session. You also have to hold your meetings at a time and a place that's reasonably accessible to the public. Again, unless there's some kind of good cause that you have to move the meeting or hold it at a time that it would not normally be reasonably accessible to the public. So again, that's where that emergency guidance kicks in. And I've heard, I've talked to cities where City Hall suffered damage due to a fire or a flood. And we cannot hold our normal council meetings in the council chambers because of that situation. So then you find a different public place to hold the meeting. A local school, some other facility, like a church can comfortably sit and be open to the public. Something in town that's reasonably accessible to the public. The same for the time. I had worked for the city once, they got deemed for an open meetings violation because they held a special council meeting. They posted the notice and did everything right on that side of things, but they held the meeting on a Sunday morning at 6:00 AM. And the guidance was, that's not a reasonably accessible time to most of your public. You can debate these judgment calls. You know, what does it need to be reasonable, reasonably accessible? People are going to come up with different opinions. But always think about, okay, what are, what's reasonable for the most of our citizens here in town? So hosting them, holding the council meeting at 6:00 AM probably not going to pass the test here on the reasonable for your meeting time. Some other requirements here to note, you have to take minutes. All of your governmental body meetings have to have minutes taken. City council meetings minutes are special in the sense that you also have to publish them for cities over 200 population. They must be published within, in a newspaper, within 15 days of the meeting. Your other, other city-appointed boards and commissions, like your library board or your park board, again, they're governmental body, so they're going to have to take minutes, but they do not have to publish them. And there's a difference there. Only the city council meetings minutes have to be published. And again, that's for cities over 200 population. Cities under 200 population, they can post all of their things, like their minutes, their public hearing notices, things like that. They can post those in a free public place in downtown instead of publishing them in a newspaper. For all of your minutes, though, whether they're the city council or your library board and so on, there are some basic things that must be included. Time, date, place, again, the members of the governmental body that are present, the council members that are present, including those who are not present. That should be noted as well. And then obviously, the big stuff. Any votes that were taken, you need to note those in the minutes and note how each individual member voted on each vote. Okay? So on a five-o vote, you can simply say the measure passed with 5 to 0. Obviously, that indicates how each person, each council member voted. But if the vote is 4 to 1 or it's 3 to 2, then you need to note exactly how each member voted. These members voted, these three voted yes, these three voted no. Okay, that's got to be specified in the minutes. Minutes also on public records, of course. You've got to make sure they're open to public inspection. That would include your boards and commission, any minutes from those groups that have meetings. They're always open to public inspection. Any questions on minutes or anything else so far? Okay, I'll keep chugging along, but again, just let me know if anything comes to mind. The next area here is closed sessions. And this one's always a really complicated part of the open meetings law because again, as we started out, open meetings are meant to be open to the public, obviously. But there is a little card out for closed sessions for very specific reasons. And we listed in this presentation the most common ones. And by far and away, by far and away, the most common would be using a closed session to discuss employee performance. This one is special in that the individual employee must request a closed session. You can also use a closed session to discuss hiring and discharge, potential hiring and discharge situations. On the hiring side, this does give your council the ability to use a closed session to conduct candidate interviews. If you're seeking the appointments and seeking somebody to fill an open city position and you want to, the council wants to interview them in closed session, you can do that under the state code of Iowa. But again, that person or those people, the candidates, would have to first request the closed session. Then the council can use it. The other most common ones for city governments, city councils, would be discussing litigation strategy with your council, your city attorney or your attorney who's going to represent you in that lawsuit. Discussing the potential sale or purchase of real estate. And then to discuss a specific law enforcement matter. Typically, this is very rare, but if the city is involved in a law enforcement investigation and the council needs to discuss that with law enforcement personnel and you can't, you know, if you discuss that investigation or the contents of it in open session, it could basically tip your hand as a city government on which direction the investigation is going to go. Instead of doing that, you can discuss it in a closed session. For any of those types of closed sessions, there are some very specific things you must do as a city council. All the closed, any closed session has to be on the agenda, any council meeting agenda. You have to list the specific state code subsection that allows for that particular type of closed session. So going back to the most common closed session, the Iowa code that allows for that is Section 21.51I. You can tell I've done this a lot in my time at the league, that you would have to list on your agenda, say, pursuant to Iowa code, Section 21.51I, the council will consider using a closed session to discuss employee performance. That has to be on your agenda. It's very wordy, but this is very important because obviously, closing an open session is rare. And basically, by being very detailed on your agenda, you're telling the public and the media, this is why we're going to close session and it is a lawful purpose to go to closed session. That's why it's important to be very detailed on your agenda when you list the, any closed session. When you get to closed session during the council meeting itself, obviously, you start your meeting in an open session like normal. You may have a variety of items on the agenda. Eventually, you get to your closed session item. When you get to that item, you must have at least a two-thirds vote to use a closed session or all of the members present to vote to use that closed session. Assuming you get that done, then you can go to closed session. We also advise cities to, ahead of time, get a legal opinion from their attorney, either in writing or orally, if the attorney is present at your meeting. So that is entered into record and gives you a defense. I'll talk about violations at the end of this presentation. One of the defenses you have is someone tries to contest your use of a closed session relying on your city attorney's opinion or the legal opinion of the attorney is a defense inquiry. Okay, so that's why it's important to get that done ahead of time so you can have that in your back pocket in case you're contesting for any use of a closed session. A few other things the state code requires related to closed sessions. You have to keep detailed minutes in an audio recording. Nowadays, the state code is kind of antiquated because it says, it refers to kind of, you have to place these items in a sealed envelope. Nowadays, most of the closed session minutes would be just typed up notes on a laptop or a computer. And same with an audio recording. Most cities don't use kind of the old school cassette tapes or some kind of old tape recorder. Nowadays, pretty much everybody uses digital recordings. You don't really have a cassette to place in a sealed envelope. So instead, you just need to place those digital items or electronic files in a password-protected file on your computer system. And the only thing, the only place, the only people can open those past, those sealed items are Bishop Court or a judge, for that matter, or the State Department's office or actually the Iowa Public Information Board as well. Otherwise, they are sealed and you must keep them for up to a year. After a year, you dispose of the contents from a closed session. A few other pointers here. If you ever do go to closed session, you can only discuss the items relevant to that closed session. So if you're in there to discuss a potential purchase of real estate, do not use that. You can then talk about something that's not related. and then talk about something that's not related to that item. Okay, that's a big no-no. Also, a big no-no is to never talk publicly about the closed session and what was discussed inside that closed session. The only people who should know about what was discussed during the closed session are those involved. Okay, I know that's again common sense, but I've dealt with too many cities frankly, where one of the council members then shares what was discussed in that closed session with the folks down at the open tap after the council meeting, or even to their spouse or family members, and then they unfortunately, a couple of times have shared it with others and now word has spread and that council member is violating the open meetings law by sharing that with people who should not have had, not have been aware of that, the contents of the closed session. And then also, perhaps most importantly, the other I discovered is that you cannot make any informal votes during a closed session. You can certainly indicate as a city council member and as a group, I'm going to vote this way or I'm going to vote that way on this matter, you know, I'm going to vote to approve the purchase of this real estate, but the formal vote, all formal votes have to be done in open session. Okay? So for example, again, using the real estate as an example, if you use a closed session to discuss the potential purchase of real estate, that's fine, you go into your closed session, discuss that, everyone kind of agrees to a purchase price, the next item on the agenda should be council will consider approval of purchase of real estate, something to that effect, then you can formally vote on that matter. But again, all formal votes have to be on or in an open session. And then lastly, the governmental body, the council, can determine who attends a closed session. So again, using the same example, if you're going to go into a closed session to discuss the potential sale or purchase of real estate, you might invite in your city attorney, probably are going to invite in your city attorney to all of your closed sessions for that matter. You might also invite in a real estate agent who is helping you as a city government find the best price for this real estate that you're interested in, and they're going to help execute the deal. So you might invite them in to talk about different price points that you're comfortable with. So you can invite in individuals as necessary in your closed session. Then lastly here, you can also exclude a member of your council if that member had a conflict of interest. So again, using the same example on a real estate matter, if a council member is the owner of the land that the city government is interested in purchasing, they clearly have a conflict of interest, you can exclude them then at that point because they have a conflict of interest. So that's the only time you probably see the council member be excluded from a closed session when they have a conflict of interest. Any questions on closed sessions? Okay. In the next area, I kind of touched on this a little bit before, I'll just wrap it up. On electronic participation, again, the state code has long allowed governmental bodies of all types to use meetings, media, electronic meetings, as they call it. For most, again, for many years, this would typically mean a council member was on the road for work or vacation and they wanted to join a council meeting at home, or sometimes they were, participation was required to reach a quorum, and so the city was kind of scrambling, they'd say, they'd ask us like, well, how do I do this? And I say, well, actually the state code allows for it, so if the council member can call in, that counts as participation with a few catches. They can, you can only use electronic meetings, electronic meetings, if meeting in person is impossible or impractical. So that's, that's one kind of key element there. So don't just use these just because you want to, do it because you're trying, because the meeting in person is impossible and practical. So it's providing notice, all the other open meetings laws, rules apply if you're going to do like a fully electronic meeting. And then the other parts of this is just kind of the practical side of this, making sure that if you're having a meeting in person and then one of your council members is going to attend remotely or virtually, that on both sides of the call or the video conference that everyone can hear each other. And then especially for if you have like an in-person meeting and one of your council members is going to call in, making sure that anyone in the room can hear that comment. It's kind of like tonight, if everyone can hear the comments and they can hear the vote, most importantly, if somebody, if a council member is attending remotely, that their votes can be heard clearly by those in the room. Then finally, you need to list in the minutes that council member X attended the electronic meetings and the reason why, because they were out of town for work, because they were on vacation, and this was the only way that they can join the meeting. And then you're good to go. Moving over into some meeting rules of conduct, this kind of slides into more of our best practices portion of this training, but we just like to emphasize this because a lot of city councils and their meetings can go sideways really quickly with disruptions, whether that be from the council itself or members of the public, we just again try to emphasize, you do have the ability to set rules for your meetings that's supported by the state code in two different sections, as you can see here on your screen. And really it is advised to have meeting rules and procedure and decorum to keep your meetings free of interruption, make sure that you maintain proper decorum. At the end of the day, this is a business meeting. You are doing the business of the public, of your, of your city, of your residents and taxpayers, and so at some point, you got to get down to business, you got to get to the point of approving the bills, the payments, the contracts, the resolutions and ordinances and all that fun stuff. So we're not going to spend a lot of time on this, we have another presentation if you ever want us to do more on this, it gets way more into the best practices for running orderly and effective meetings. But again, for tonight's purposes, it's just hitting on the high floor of things, making sure that you're aware, you have the ability, if you don't have meeting rules and procedure, that you should have some, and if you need some samples set, we have a bunch that can kind of help you set your own. But if you do go down this path or if you want to amend your current rules and procedure, these would be the key components, how the agenda is set, who has the power to set the agenda. Most cities, the mayor kind of governs that process, the council members can feed in ideas to the mayor, and pretty much every city out there, they rely heavily on the city clerk and the deputy clerk, and for the larger cities, the city manager to, it's been a lot to the agenda every, for every council meeting because the staff, they're usually more in tune with like, okay, we don't need these bills to be paid and these permits to be approved, and this, those technical things of the kind of quick money that any city government out there. The other big pieces to it would certainly be discussion, how is council discussion done, making sure it's fair and balanced, and so that one person's not dominating the conversation all night long, and that there's ways, good, strong, sensible ways to move conversation and discussion so it's even, and eventually calling for a vote, especially for the voting habits, they're not there all night long. Same with public comments, similar concept in that it's great to have public interest and public participation, and pretty much every city out there has a dedicated item on their agenda for public comments. And that's, that idea is to make sure that the members of the public, if and when they wish to address their council, they have some time to. That being said, again, you don't want to be in there all night, and so most cities say, okay, you have three minutes at the beginning of the council meeting, each individual has three minutes to address the council on something related to the city government, related to the city, city's business. And this would be in addition to any public hearing. Public hearings are separate from this, so public hearings are the time when the public must have the right to speak, that's when they, clearly you must give them the right to speak. A public comment time would be in addition to that. So if there's something that's not on the agenda, but is still related to the city government, that somebody from your public has that ability, come out, address the public, share their thoughts and their desires, their, you know, their wishes or their complaints as the case may be with their elected representatives, but again, makes sense to have rules that govern that. And then for everybody involved, decorum is always, you should have some kind of rules in place that prohibit disruptions, interruptions, and certainly name-calling, threats of violence of any type should never be allowed or condemned. Those are the worst-case scenarios, but unfortunately, they happen. In the last five, six, seven years, we've seen a huge increase in a lack of decorum we hear from our membership, and so this whole concept of having meeting rules is really trying to be proactive, trying to keep things professional. You know, people can be strongly in disagreements about any number of things, and that's healthy, it's, it's fine to have different viewpoints, of course, but everyone needs to stay professional and treat each other with respect, that's the key. And then lastly, enforcement, and this is really, almost every city out there falls to the mayor because the mayor is the presiding officer of the council, and this is frankly one of their jobs. It's kind of a fun job to enforce the meeting rules and try to get people back in line, especially if they're getting a little too talkative or worse, you know, start going down the unprofessional path, you got to rein them back in, but the mayor is the presiding officer of the council and that is one of their jobs. Okay, so we'll wrap up here with violations. Again, if you have any questions before we close out, just let me know. But the state code does talk about what can happen if a city council or governmental body or individuals that participate in a governmental body violate the open meetings law, they can be subject to different types of penalties and fines. And I will simply say, if we go through this, I'll kind of start going backwards, almost everything gets kicked to the Iowa Public Information Board, like tonight's training is a result of a complaint being filed with IPID, and so what, IPID is the state agency that has the oversight ability to look into all the governmental bodies out there at the state local level and look into complaints, see if there's any violations, and if so, they can order things like this, like a training and so on. But they do have higher powers, to go back to what we see here with district courts. So again, what you see here is like the bishop court level, but IPID has similar powers. I would simply say the biggest takeaway is the repeated or when a member of a governmental body member knowingly violates the open meetings or open records law, that's when IPID or a district court judge is really going to get it serious. Ninety-nine percent of violations of the open meetings and open records laws are out of ignorance and simple just mistakes, they're just mistakes, not to condone it, but they're just simple mistakes that people didn't even know that they were violating the law, but yet they did, and so you got to stop. And so most of the time with IPID or district court judge, they will simply say knock it off, give some training, don't do it again. It's when people knowingly violate the law, that's when things get serious. So what can IPID do to our district court judge? Do they, again, they can issue these penalties or fines, they can ultimately remove an elected official from office, that's only happened once, it's at the county level if memory serves, so it's very rare for it to get to that level of concern and level of violation, the damage is ultimately what can happen. But they can, but they can, short of that, they can also level fines on the individual, as not the city government, it'd be the individual that have to pay that fine. I alluded to this before, what kind of defense do you have if you're alleged to have violated a component of the open meetings law or the use of a closed session, we talked about this, if you relied on an attorney's opinion or city attorney's opinion, the attorney general opinion from them, opinion from the Iowa Public Information Board, all of those will give you protection if, again, if you are alleged to have violated the open meetings law in particular, the use of a closed session. Okay, so we kind of talked about this. The next session's open records, the next session's presentation, I'm going to leave that be, and stop here and just see if we have any questions before we close out. What did we do? Anyone? Any questions?
What was filed on this?
She can speak to that later.
Okay.
Nope, I don't think there are any questions, anyone from the newly elected? Not hearing any right now anyway.
Okay, sounds good. Well, the, the invitation always stands, everyone here at the league is going to support you all, so if anything comes to mind here in the near future or in the, in the distant future, just let us know, we're here to help you guys, and we appreciate your service to your city, and I appreciate you letting me do this via Zoom during a busy time on my schedule, so hopefully everything came through well enough, but again, let me know if anything comes up and I'm here to help you guys.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great night everybody. Take care.
You too. All right, is everybody good? Get back to your seat. Oh, do you want to speak to that at all? No, it's stated, no. Tell them later. Okay. All right, attendance of guests and the open opportunity to address the council. And we'll sign in first of all, yes, we're good at that. And some of you, I know we're here for the training, are newly elected, thank you. Matt are here to speak later about?
I'm here as, I'm the hall of the city.
Okay, perfect. And Linda that?
Linda's here because I noticed on your agenda that you had a repair to the park slide, and several months ago, I gave the council a place to go get two thousand dollars for beautification, and I have the form, but I could not do it because I'm an individual, and yet nobody from this city council contacted me so that you could have received two thousand dollars, free money, to repair or do things for your city park. This will not come up again until this spring, so it's a thought for the new council members to remember this, and I will try and bring it to their attention again, to receive this money. When you can get free money, you might as well go for it.
Is that through the poll? Pardon? Was that through the poll? Or what, was that through?
It was through the poll, pardon. And they offer this to all cities around, so all you have to do is fill out the form and send it in and?
And it's for parks only?
No, beautification is what it's for. You can use it for your park, you can use it for flowers, to decorate your, whatever you want to use it for, it's called beautification. And they, Poet is a ethanol company, and so it, like I said, it's, it's free money and why not apply for it? But nobody contacted me after I came to the council meeting and offered this to them, so.
I remember it, I just don't tell you to.
Yeah, and I can't do it because I'm an individual, it has to be either somebody from the chamber or somebody from your city council.
Like a nonprofit, I don't know, do you think? Is that what it is?
Yes. So it's something to remember, that's all I have.
But it's only good now till, not till spring again?
Not till spring, that's when they'll put it out again.
And how did you see it?
Because I have a granddaughter that works for it.
Oh, is it like?
Yes.
Okay, so they can just call somebody there then, or what?
No, it was published, Poet, well, I, I'm on their website, I guess, because of Samantha, but I got it on my phone and the?
It opens on April third and closes April twenty-eighth of this year, or of, oh no, that's two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah.
But I would assume that it's going to be at the same?
They'll do it, I'm sure they'll do it again, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's something to remember.
Yes. Two thousand?
One-time grant of four thousand dollars for local nonprofits, schools, churches, earth-friendly groups, and individuals who are ready to lead a project that will improve their town. Miriam Patrick.
Cool. All right, anyone else? Danny?
I'd like to invite you all up to Legion next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, at six thirty, we're having an appreciation for our Bryan County elected officials and the area clergy, so it'll give everyone a chance to come out and rub elbows with those people, as well as we're going to have a program, we've got three speakers lined up, so it'd be a good evening to education, inspiration, if you're interested, I'd love to have you out there.
What time was that?
Six thirty, there's meet and greet, and we'll start the program about six fifty.
Anyone else have anything right now? Okay, let's move to number seven, approving the minutes from the 11/6/23 regular meeting. First of all, you can't approve them as is because the date is wrong at the very top. If you'll see on the very top, that one's corrected, the inside. It would need to say met in regular session of number six, 2023. So that is one correction, that's because they're already been made here in the city's end, but you wanted to note that. Do you have any other changes requested?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting 11/6/23 with the correction.
I'll say, yeah. Okay, and then, motion by Jane, seconded by Lexi, to approve the minutes with the correction of the date moving to November 6th. Do you have any other additional corrections, concerns, or discussion required? And then we'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes with the correction of November 6th date in the first sentence. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes, and here are the minutes with the adjustment approved. Okay, you have claims to approve, and that is in the blue paper this time. And there are some additional claims on the backside of that. These are the higher part, that one's...
I think those aren't the...
These are the safety signs and such. These are your...
I have a question, what are the back engineering fees? I think it's been ongoing, has anybody told us what they're, are they something that you're getting done yet, calendar, or what? Is that with that switch deal, or is it an ongoing bill we're getting from back?
I don't know.
I can look at the invoice and let you know.
Yeah.
Why don't you? Yeah. Don't know if I heard after meetings, but...
I don't know. Does anybody want to know? Does anybody want to know now?
I'm saying we checked before.
Is it back or DGR? It says back. Ah, okay. That's why it was DGR, I would think it would have been.
Okay, sounds good. They doing what we did?
Who's speaking?
Okay, that's, I guess, we can start that concept yet? Does any grant cover, grant funds, or else the sewer project? Be the, the project is where it's assigned right now, so...
Uh, this one's for, what's the amount on there? $12.66? Yeah, um, it's for civil engineering services for City of Palina Sanitary Sewer Lagoon irrigation project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What was the fan blower?
For the sweeper, for the cab. And that's actually gonna get sent back, so...
Is it working?
Huh?
Doesn't work?
We got it working without it, so...
Oh, good. And your safety signs, what were they?
For the bike path.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve the claims. I'll say Lexi's motion. All right, Lexi's made the motion, and Carol is seconded to approve payment of claims, including additional claims presented tonight. Does anyone else have any questions related to claims to be paid? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving payment of claims as presented on the blue sheet front and back. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes, motion carries, payment of claims approved. Bank reconciliation journals, we have, we have a lot of paper in front of you so that you have it. That should be here, they're all there, as you can see, except for what?
October. Yeah, so you'll have like one little sheet that kind of looks like this for October, and that file actually corrupted. We had a tech call today, and they tried many times, but they're unsuccessful, like retrieving that because we had done November and December afterwards. So if we had, if we had known it corrupted, I guess, then they would have been able to retrieve it, but since we had already done November and December, they weren't able to go back. But that highlighted spot shows the time and date it was completed, so everything's reconciled, and just the PDF file corrupted, I guess, so, I don't know. They're poking around all in there, trying to figure it out, but they couldn't get it.
Who had a look at it?
Our software tech. Yeah.
Okay. Lots of those for you to review. And I'm sure another batch coming up, probably some before, or at least the next one, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah.
Silver.
Uh-huh. Okay, oh, we want to get Derek. So our next item on the agenda is a presentation on Derek, answer, Derek Boyce of AVIP Solutions. So if you can look at your IP proposal paper there.
And each packet has different amounts. If you go to the very back page, one's with the PC and one's without.
You see?
I can make them different.
Okay, I guess.
It's the hardware, right, Alex?
Yes, yeah, should be.
So what are we getting if we get 25?
Um, one is with the PC and one is without. So, okay, this one's probably the... And he can, he'll go over that, too.
Okay.
We told him about 6:30, so they're just like...
Oh, so he's never come yet?
Well, you can text him at all?
Yeah.
He sent his name, right?
Yeah.
He sent us like 5:30, and he sent two?
Yeah.
So basically, your, yes, your proposal's the same as last time, minus the back part where we were asking, the question came up, we do have this, is the CAPS program complimentary, I guess, for use inclusive, allowing for the CAPS program? So we were able to use that today, and we're still, it's our first time, so we're figuring it all out as well, but, so that includes that, so that's why they took that off of the quote, because we already have access to a 75-inch TV, and then we will need, the question is whether we have both computer and non-computer?
Yeah.
Because we're trying to use the little surface that we have here to run, which is trying to do the, hopefully, the live stream for Facebook today, but it does not have an HDMI connection to connect to that, and so a real dedicated computer would be wise, or at least one that can handle certain tasks, you know, some basics, but... And again, it's VC3, VC3, not DC3, V with a V is who we have currently, have had for a while, for years, whatever it is.
And they're based out of Alabama?
Sure, Alabama.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we considering quotes from other IT businesses, or is this the only one that we're gonna get quoted, or what?
We have an existing one, so that is one to compare, that's your comparison, yes, but no, there's not a third to compare to.
This 749, is that going to be the monthly charge then?
There it is. Oh, thank you. All right, can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Derek?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes. Yep.
Perfect, that's awesome. How's everyone doing today?
Pretty good.
Good.
That's good. Is that Brenda here, is it Brenda, Alex, Michelle, and a few others in the room?
Yes, quite a few others. We've got a room full here at the city council meeting.
Perfect, sweet. Don't want to take up too much of your time, but just want to say thank you guys for letting me be here. I know Brenda, come round up some of that information with you guys here before, but today what I want to talk about is really just looking at me and your guys as a managed IT provider, talked a little bit about with what you guys are currently doing as a city, Brenda and Michelle and Alex as well. Since you guys have a health provider located somewhere in Georgia, doesn't sound like there's too much communication with that provider, not really through exactly everything that we might be providing you guys, so that's how that conversation kind of got started with Brenda and myself, so, and then them as well. So I will share my screen here really quick, once you go through the proposals that we have here together, and I'm sure you guys might have some, let's see, in front of you. And just a second, can you guys see that right there?
We can, yes.
Perfect, so I have a few proposals. One originally was one with a conference room setup with a PC core with everything in there. This one does not have it. So really what we want to do is provide a few things for you. One is cybersecurity, more efficiency for you guys and your IT infrastructure as with your current provider. Not too sure, kind of in the dark, not much relationship there. That's a big part that we want to provide for you guys, is that, you know, you know who you're working with, someone local and base locally here in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a very person dating with Brenda, Michelle, and Alex, just so you guys know, someone there for you. Definitely peace of mind through comprehensive disaster recovery plan if, you know, anything catastrophic was to happen. A little bit about A&amp;B, and by the way, I apologize if you hear my two-year-old in the background, and he goes crazy, we do apologize in advance, just in case you hear him in the background. But a little bit about A&amp;B, we got started in 1981, and then in 1993, our current owner, who just passed 30 years of ownership for A&amp;B, bought the company out in 1993. It evolved greatly from not just a printer-copier company, promotional, office products, furniture, water, coffee, but also managed IT, and that's where I come in. And at the end of the day, A&amp;B's vision is to develop strong communities, whether it's in Sioux Falls or in the surrounding communities as well, and our mission, of course, is servicing your guys' business. We're located in northwest Iowa, southwest Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, parts of Wyoming as well. So what I want to go through here is really just talking about the services that we provide for you guys, not just doing an apples-to-apples comparison of what you guys are currently doing, but really getting you guys to the efficiency of more of the standardization for your guys' IT. So proposed IT services, of course, are going to include your 24/7, 365 help desk support. That's going to include your guys' patch management, security, any network, you know, difficulties that you guys are having. That includes remote and on-site. The other thing that we'll include for you guys is remote backup on your PC so that everything is backed up. And then right here's a very important one, it says EDR, endpoint detection response is what that stands for. A better way to look at it is a next-gen antivirus, so it's just, in 2013, EDR is one invented, and they just saw that antiviruses, you know, the ones like Webbrew, McAfee, ABG, Enord, and the ones you just go Best Buy, Walmart, to pick up, put on your home computer, those weren't getting the jobs done in the corporate world. So that's where these were invented, all of this is included in our assessment that we did for you guys. Network management, as I talked about, firewall support, switch support, access point, stronger support, and little side note on there, you know, devices are included, but whatever you guys purchase, we're definitely there for you, it's important. Email system management. So we actually do work with City of Pringar, just north of you guys. We do their IT for them, server management. One of the things that we are working on is, because I know City of Pringar, you guys as a City of Palina, you guys go through TCA Express, which is perfectly frontline, but what we want to do as a plan is to put you guys on Microsoft 365, much more standard, puts you guys in the cloud, makes it a lot easier as an MSP, such as ourselves, to manage you guys. And you know, we're doing with City of Pringar, you know, there's times where it comes up where we get it fixed, where if you guys were on Microsoft 365, a lot of those email problems wouldn't arise, and, you know, your guys' taxes dollars would go to much better use rather than, you know, TCA Express focusing on the city itself, they can definitely focus on your guys' residence. So that's something that I put in here just as a partner flip, we have partnered with Microsoft, we're a Microsoft flip partner, and we do that for you guys. Break fixes, you know, anything moved, moved out of change, that project labor, which really don't see that much, isn't included, so, you know, if your laptop breaks, you know, if there's a fan, some brand, storage, anything like that, or one of your PCs, we're going to do our best to fix it before we, you know, suggest, hey, you need to buy, you know, a brand-new, brand-new computer, we can just fix it on the spot for you guys. But that's really an example of, you know, the fan, that's not included in the services support, so if it's under warranty, we're going to look at that for you guys, but really manage those IT assets for you. And at the end of the day, I think with this whole project that we're looking at here for you guys, what I like to say is, it really gives, you know, Alex, you know, Brenda, the day-to-day people that are running your guys' city, the ability to have an IT director in each of their pockets, they know who to contact, they know who to reach out to, one-minute response times, I want to say the average is about 20 minutes to get an IT issue resolved. So it's really giving the city a full-time IT director without, you know, the $80,000 or $100,000 salary that most IT directors are requiring nowadays. Reporting, like I said, a big part of it is IT, the IT asset management, you know, we're going to be looking at your guys' desktop performance, some health, hardware inventory, updates, patching, warranties, as we've discussed before, refresh schedules where, you know, devices are dying, we typically go with the standard of five years, but at the end of the day, I really consult you guys and say, hey, you know, it's been five years, how's the device going? If, you know, if it's working perfectly fine with you guys, I mean, get as much life as you can out of the device, but typically around that five-year mark is when you start seeing devices slowing down. Of course, it's going to include just strategy planning, quarterly reviews, on-call consulting, if you guys have any IT questions or, you know, plans of what you want to do as a city going forward, IT policy, high review and development. And a big, a big thing right now is cybersecurity. That's something that I believe that we can do really well for you guys, and a lot of it goes back to policy, you know, not sharing passwords, doing multi-factor authentication to get into emails, and the benefit to that is that you guys have someone managing that so you don't have to worry about that for you. Another thing, too, here is a security awareness training, where we provide that, where you guys included in here, and also the Security Operations Center, so that goes hand-in-hand with that antivirus that we were talking about. Our team and our partner, that we have, we're truly monitoring you guys when we force in 365. This isn't our help us guys, this isn't our daily IT support guys, this is a truly dedicated team, where if something's happening on your network, we're going to be able to cut that device off of your network to protect you guys and protect the city. And we're running out of time, I'll hurry on here a little bit. Next one is just our proposal for a network setup. So some that you guys are looking at getting, some that we did with the City of Pringar as well, set them up on a firewall, give the ability for VPN access, keep up with notebook, for a big part of that, too, is the protection on your guys' network, access point for managing Wi-Fi, 24-port field switch for getting everything on Ethernet, then the NAS. So what that adds is we want to do, it's going to be profile sharing, so not everything has to sit on Michelle's computer, you'll get much faster load speeds from Alex, and that's something that they were talking about, where, you know, if Michelle's loading something and Alex is loading something, the time is greatly reduced. You'll get much faster load speeds from Alex. And that was something that they were talking about where, you know, if Michelle's loading something and Alex is loading something, the time is greatly reduced from Michelle compared to Alex. Just because it's not on a sensibly located device. And that's what we'll do for you guys here. Conference room. Really, these two proposals are pretty much the exact same. The only difference is, this one's a new PC just for your guys' presentations. I believe Brenda was saying you guys had some advantage to be donated with the card with the original one, which we took off for you guys. So this one would include a PC for presentation, toilet skater and all that. But a big part of that too is going to be your camera, video bar with sound and speakers, and a five-port POE switch that would connect all of that together. So, all of that being said, your monthly investment, which is going to be this top half right here. These two ones, these bottom two are going to be your one-time investments. Your monthly investment, you'll be looking at about seven fifty. That's going to include your on-the-middle twenty-four-seven IT support. That's going to include your network security with the twenty-four-seven three-sixty-five Security Operations Center, which is that security analyst team that I was talking about. Extremely dedicated to watching over your network from cyber criminals. Big thing, part of that too is your Microsoft three-sixty-five. What we would put on there is email protection, to protect not just you guys as a city administratively, but to protect your residents as well. What we've been seeing is a lot of small towns. You know, you've heard of Philadelphia a few months ago. I believe it was Dallas or Austin, Texas. You know, here are these big cities in the news that are getting hit with ransomware attacks. Austin or Dallas, whichever one it was. I believe they asked to pay eight million dollars as a city. What I typically say is, you know, if you get hit with a ransomware attack and they lock up your files, you're probably looking at about ten percent of your guys' cities or experienced cities revenue to unlock those files. So, rather than waiting for that to happen, we want to be proactive in protecting you guys. So all of that will be included for you guys. PC backup where, you know, disaster recovery, if anything happens, we'd be able to spin you guys up. And then managing that NAS, and then of course strategically being your guy with IT advisor with the life of the relationship. Long time with that is going to be five hundred. That's for us to set up the emails, email security, backup solution, your security tools, your help desk, and really doing a lot of documentation. Really see where you guys are at moving to the next step of efficiency. So that is the monthly investment for seven fifty. A long time for just the network devices and setting that up. You're going to be looking at about twenty-seven hundred. And then the next one for the conference room setup, you're going to be looking at about thirty-two hundred. So, all of that is the same. And then at the very bottom, I hear the only thing that changed was no PC. Right here, so it goes from thirty-two hundred to twenty-six hundred. So, is that, sorry, I went over like ten minutes. I do apologize. Does anyone have any questions? Are the city and council members anything I can help advise you guys on?
Do you have other people in Northwest Iowa that have your services other than Pringar?
Sorry, could you repeat that again?
Do you have other people in other cities or whatever in Northwest Iowa besides Pringar?
Well, we do work with Pringar, not on the IT side, but we do work with Northwest Housing Development out in Spencer, Iowa. And then in South Dakota, we work with the City of Plankton, City of Monroes, and then the City of Northing as well. So, a lot of the systems that you guys are using, like G-Works or another popular one is Canyon, we do have familiarity with that.
Okay, thank you. What about our ambulance and fire department computers? Do they need to be on this?
Did you hear that question, Derek?
Yep, the fire department and ambulance, I did hear. On this plan, we do have it up to five devices, which would cover the three. And I believe with Brenda and I were talking, that did include the fire department as well. Not to be wrong, the ambulance, but it would cover up to five devices.
We have a laptop and an iPad.
Okay. And you said the next breakdown would be one of ten devices though, right?
Yep, that would be the next tier up. So typically our tiers are based on device count. So we'll go from five devices to ten, to fifteen, to twenty, and then at eighteen, after twenty, we go on a custom basis for those, you know, larger clientele's.
How much more would it be if we went to ten?
Question was, how much does the ten-device plan? Is it simply a doubling of our monthly fee or what?
Yep, so that would increase typically about the next five devices. You would be looking at about three fifty to four hundred. We would have to conform the numbers though.
Oh, three fifty to four hundred per device or total?
No, no, not per device. That's for the tiered ones, so up to ten devices.
The additional conference room setup, did that be added to at a later date?
Yeah, you don't have to do that right now. We can definitely look at that later for you guys. So, these one-time ones, these are outside of the monthly managed IT side of things. So, this conference room one, yes, can be at a later date.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Derek before we let him get back to us?
Life, child, yeah, two-year-old, was that?
Ready to discuss? Right, to discuss. No other questions for Derek?
Derek, thanks for joining us tonight and laying that out. That was helpful.
Yeah, for sure. I appreciate all of your guys' time and thank you for letting me join your guys' meeting. If you have any questions, let Brenda know. She has my email, she has my phone. I mean, text me, call me, whatever it needs. Always love being there with you guys. We appreciate your guys' time though, so thank you very much.
Thanks Derek.
All right, we'll see you. Thank you. Bye.
So do we have any commitments to our whoever we have now? Do we just cancel it at any time? Do we know if there are three days or is there some kind of limits?
I can't remember. I remember talking about like...
I know, I think we brought it last year, but I thought we'd check to see where we're at with that before we say yes to this guy. So we get everything smoothed out. Just in case.
Think we had a contract or something that...
We didn't find any contract, I'm showing.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do we have to have a fee if we...
Well, that's what I'm wondering. They need to know if we, where we're at with this present company.
We'll try to make a call and see.
And I do kind of feel that we should maybe just do the first part first. That's my thoughts on it.
And wait for the conference?
Yes, kind of see how everything goes and if everything's happy and we're liking it.
I kind of think we need the new one because...
Of all the issues.
All the issues and plus having someone really close. They can come here if they need to. And that's really important.
Yes, because we have not had good service.
No, no, we have not. So what do you think? We probably have to go to five to ten devices though?
I think we should do the five first and see what we're doing. And if we can add four more, five more, we'll be at four hundred. It's not a big deal. See what's how much that does for us.
Yeah, we can find out how much. Yeah, we can get rid of them or whatever.
Because where, where would all the five devices go? Three in here or four in here?
Three.
Three, three.
Three, I think.
Well, if you don't come to service.
Oh, we don't...
Okay, so three in here, and then there'd be two more. So we still wouldn't have fire media.
We could do fire and...
And then we'd be able to use five.
Then we would sell.
Right, so I think it was great to stay without that. What does Nate have?
He's on his own.
He's on his own.
Okay.
So I think...
Just table it maybe hopefully by next meeting?
Well, yeah, so either that or we could make a motion, I guess, to take it. If we have problems getting out of the...
Right, yeah.
We could make a motion like that. And then they could get busy with it because they could spend pain.
Five minutes.
Huh?
Five-minute backup or a twelve-second backup?
Yeah. Yeah, well, and just having somebody that you can call and that can help you.
Well, plus you can't, you know, you're just the workspace if you go through.
Yes, Michelle's.
Alex and Mike can be really, really slow.
They were designed for high expectations. And so the people that are now working on them above the level of what they were designed for is a problem.
That's not because you're typing like this.
I cannot resist.
I do have to go to another meeting.
Do you want to jump ahead to your...
We're very honorable.
Do you guys have any questions? Sure, is everyone okay with moving up to item sixteen and seventeen?
Well, do we want to finish this in the motion or what do we want to do?
Let's do something about this.
I think, sorry.
Should we get it after table or go through?
I think we should go through the first one, but...
The twenty-five, the twenty-five, yes. I'll make the motion that we accept the A and the IT solutions for the twenty-five-hundred-dollar quote.
With the idea that we figure out what's going to happen with that first one.
Yep.
That's, you know, so that we don't have any problems there. And then I will second you.
So for an emotion and a second, Lexi, a motion here, and a second by Carol to approve the investment with the equipment of the twenty-five-hundred for the IT and the monthly managed IT proposal. Given the fact that we can exit our existing contract with no issues. Yes, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions or discussion related to this topic?
Are we currently paying this amount? Are we...
Five, something.
Paying this?
Five, something, I thought.
Your plans? My plans?
So good. Couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For something like that. Might be a better result.
What's out for you?
I can't think of it. I probably would find it, but I'm off the top of my head. Any other questions?
So, yeah, if there's a cancellation fee or something like that, you have to come back to this.
Can we get out of it? I know, is there a thirty-day limit or is there? But that's something you can, at least you can go forward if there's nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to be clear that if that was the case, we have to...
So everyone understands the ask on the table for the motion is to allow approval of this monthly managed IT proposal with the upfront equipment of the twenty-six hundred, that one? Twenty-six, seventy-four, twenty-five? Given that there are no lingering issues with existing DC three termination. Correct. Yes, all in favor of that, without me restating it again? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes. Motion carries. Okay. And so you want to pass on twelve right now and go to?
Yep.
Move ahead to...
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen, and so Laura can go. Okay, item sixteen, a resolution to approve Kylie Massman and Carly Orde are both applying. And you have their applications in your packet. They are both going for EMT. That is something that was left out of the one, but that's clarified.
I think she can have decided.
She has decided. So Carly is, yes, her EMT is rising. And you have both there.
They are both in class, so.
They're already in class.
I'll make the motion that we accept Kylie Massman and Carly Orde as an ambulance crew.
I need a resolution, just read them one at a time, so we have a set, they're going to say resolutions approved.
I make the resolution to approve Kylie Massman as an ambulance crew. I'll second.
All right, Lexi has introduced the resolution and is seconded that to accept or approve Kylie Massman as an ambulance crew member.
I'll make the...
Hold up, do we have any other discussion related to this resolution on the table? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hongko.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And it's lots of the announced ayes, passes, thank you. And then the next.
I'll make the resolution to approve Carly Orde as an ambulance crew.
Okay, Lexi's introduced the resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And Carol is seconded. So we've had the resolution to approve Carly Orde as an ambulance crew member, introduced by Lexi and seconded by Carol. Does anyone else have any questions related to this candidate?
I should have these last month, except I apparently left the email in my drafts.
So hearing no other further discussion required, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hongko.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
All right, that's all ayes. The resolution approved. Both members.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I think they're going to be very good additions to our team.
How many do you have total without these two, would you say, for ambulance right now?
How does it count? We have four EMTs. Myself, Doug, Laura, and Ian Oliver, who's been a great addition. We have three drivers, four drivers now. With Molly, Joel, Isaac, and Miranda Draper, Molly's daughter. And we have four nurses. Amber, Sherry, Caitlin, and Casey Miller.
Caitlin, who's the last one?
Casey Miller, was Casey Wolf.
Oh, okay.
She just got married.
Okay, sounds good.
So...
That's a good crew.
You have a very good crew. So, I think one of these days they'll say, eh, we don't need you anymore.
Thank you.
And I am on record with that. But so far they say, no, you're staying. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, do we want to go back to, are we tabling item twelve? Until, since you decided to take back from the first part of the A and B's IT and table the conference until next meeting or till you, whatever?
Could this, make a motion to table it to a later date?
I'll second that. See how the first part goes.
Okay, we've had a motion by Lexi, seconded by Carol to table the A and B IT proposal, solutions proposal for the council chambers conference meeting hardware. Do we have any other discussion on that for now? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote in favor of tabling the proposal for new meeting hardware setup in here. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes. Motion carries. Motion table. Okay, so we're at item thirteen, resolution to approve Josh Berry's one-hour raise for completion of water tests, distribution one, and treatment one.
Two?
Treatment, one.
One.
You missed a change. Oh, it was a tie.
One.
It was a tie.
Two, one, treatment two, yeah.
So this has been a recurring practice that is part of a fifty cents per test allowed. So that has been something that has been done before in the past. And this is...
Don't have to go back to what actually...
Be effective to when he got...
That's right.
So someone could make that resolution to approve.
I'll introduce the resolution to approve Josh Berry, a dollar an hour raise for completion of water tests, district one, and treatment one. Backdated.
I'll second.
It's distribution. So we had the resolution introduced by Jean. And so we have a second?
I did.
Yep, yeah. Seconded by Lexi to approve Josh's one hour, one dollar an hour raise for completion of both water tests, backdated to the day he earned the test or he passed the test. Do we have any other discussion or questions related to this item? If not, we can call for a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hongko.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion, resolution approved.
Now Kelly goes for a sewer, I suppose, huh?
Me and Josh both are, so.
Okay, well, that's good.
Josh is in two weeks and I haven't gotten anything back from him yet, so.
All right, item fourteen and fifteen are related, just as the ambulance crew was. You have the paper in there from the library board. There is one difference you may have noted in the list of items. So the first one, no, the second one is that. Resolution to approve resident appointments. Resolution to approve resident appointments, that's residents as in residents local to the city of Paulina, appointments to the library board of directors, Kevin Brasser and Heidi Brown are on the list. And as you see, Kevin will be replacing Bob, which has a term of six years and then Heidi is going to fill the vacated seat for moments, so it's three years left on that term. So, that covers...
Did you say Bob's was six years?
Yeah, Bob's is actually six years, so we're going to start new, the ones that are filling a vacated seat, fill the remainder of the seat and the term, and then they will live their own six year, whatever they're working, term going forward. So, that, so they have agreed to do this and they are, have, yeah, have been spoken to and are ready to go. And that is, all we need is your blessing for those, that first one, for the resident appointments, a resolution to approve. The two residents.
I will make a motion to approve the resident appointments, Kevin Brasser and Heidi Brown.
I'll second.
Carol's introduced the resolution and Lexi seconded to approve the appointments of Kevin Brasser and Heidi Brown for the resident board of, library board directors. Okay, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll call for, we'll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hongkow.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rora.
Aye.
That's all ayes, no ayes, resolution passes, they are approved. The second one is a non-resident appointments, which are O'Brien County rural members that can be on, the board has allowed two of those out of their seven, they have, right, around, yeah, two non-residents, five residents. So, the, there is only one listed here because one is coming, the Erin Wilson has been on and I don't know her term yet, but I didn't grab it by now.
Yeah, but does she need to do...
She only needs to be approved by the council because it was not approved and the county board supervisors meets tomorrow morning and they have to actually approve the non-resident.
But Erin was approved in 2020.
Was, they didn't have record of that.
October three, right in the city minutes.
Yeah, at the board of supervisors, did it go to them?
Well, but see, that's not my responsibility, three years before I started, and the city's responsibility.
But anyway, so this will just make it, she will be blessed, the county board supervisors prefer to have her on this and they will present it tomorrow morning and it will just, then she will be safely covered as approved. Even though her term is not new. So, that is what they requested we do on this one. So, Charlotte is the new candidate who will be vacating or taking, I think it's your next term, about two years left. And then Erin has a term for how long left?
I cannot cover that because I was not aware this was going to be part of this, so.
Yeah, that was what, when we talked to Barbara, we're, that's what we found out.
Maybe give the director a heads up next time.
Yeah, sure you can. Okay. So, yes, that was never done, apparently, in 2020, to the county board supervisors approval, so tomorrow that will happen and we just need your approval officially tonight so that they can act on that tomorrow.
I'll introduce a resolution to approve non-resident appointments to library board of directors of Charlotte Rupert and Erin Wilson.
I'll second. Jean. Jean has introduced the resolution and Lexi has seconded to approve the non-resident appointments to library directors, both Charlotte Rupert new and Erin Wilson existing. Anyone have any other discussion related to that? And then we'll call for a roll call.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hongkow.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rora.
Aye.
All ayes, resolution approved. Just last, after tomorrow's confirmation, and from the county board supervisors, all of them will be good. Okay, we've already handled sixteen and seventeen, we are now to eighteen. Amendment zoning ordinance, Article fifteen, sign regulations on restrictions for digital signs in residential and commercial districts. As you, I'm sure, are aware or should be aware, there have been some signs, one sign erected already, if not more than one, that did not necessarily get a permit and is not technically allowed, given its current state. It is a unique situation, so this is the way to resolve it without requiring them to lose a twenty thousand dollar investment and still make sense for what they're intending to do, which is not to cause problems, but churches here in this town, we have three potential, two are in the process or have already chosen a digital sign replacement for their existing leaderboard version. That is a very common thing happening in all towns and all across the country here, especially in small town rural Iowa. Unfortunately, the way this one was sitting was rezoned, we didn't bother to zone the churches or schools in two different zoning areas, so they are still following the residential, which residential has rules that you cannot have a giant digital billboard on your own yard or house, so that means they also could not. And that seems a little unfair necessarily, so we felt like there was a way to give them that ability to have it on, but following the following restrictions offered based on turning it down and turning it off at certain hours, so there are certain nits, is that information, I think, that we gave you here today, that's how they measure the brightness of it. It's an industry standard term, apparently, and so it counts on, you can see the differences of how bright these things are, LED walls and screens and how bright they are, and then you can find out, the digital billboards are like ten thousand, I think, sometimes can be very bright, especially the one maybe at the end of Main, seems to be very bright. So, this would allow them to keep the sign, in that case, and future situations, the school may need it and also governmental, those are the three only allowed variations that would be added in this amendment. Churches, schools, and governmental entities could allow such a sign as long as they are limited in size and they are limited in those hours and brightness of nits.
So, when were we made aware of this, because I wasn't aware, I was...
Is that your church that you go to?
Zion.
You didn't only put up that big digital sign?
That big flashing one at the end of the street that you could see from the other end of town?
Yeah, they see the digital street sign there, but when were we made aware of this?
I just meant the sign came up, it's that, that was aware, and now, they did not ask for it.
I was never made aware of, you said...
They didn't ask for a permit.
At the beginning of your comments that we were made aware of it and I was never made aware of it. Was there, was there a problem, they didn't get a permit, and the council was made aware of the fact that they didn't get a permit?
And they wouldn't be allowed to keep it currently, so that is a concern. So, in speaking with some of the members from the church...
But you don't understand what I'm trying to say here, I was never made aware of it, and this, this has nothing to do with, if I go to church there or if I go anywhere, I was never made aware of it and this was a surprise. And I have a lot of questions about this.
You've got it on Friday afternoon and this is the first question I've heard from you.
I got it, I got, Friday at five thirty.
And you had no time between now and then to ask a question of me, Alex?
When?
I don't know, do you?
When am I supposed to, I mean...
You have to wait a lot of that time.
No.
Okay, so you're key, one person is not prepared, does anyone answer questions like that?
I didn't say I was not prepared, I was not made aware of this and I have a lot of questions about this and I think that what we should do is have a work session on this so we can all discuss it and, and get through this, because I have a lot of questions about various things in this, in this amendment.
For example?
Like what?
Do you really want to discuss it now, I mean this is...
No, just say your couple.
Well, just say what you, what you want to say.
I have concerns about, off premise of signs, what's permitted and what's not, and what does it mean by that? How do you define that? I also have questions about fixed images, illumination, intermittent flashing, revolving or animation, one of the, I mean, there's just a lot of different questions here that could be cleared up. Property adjacent across from the property zone is residential district. How do you determine that and what, do you determine that at the direction the sign faces or is that, do you determine that if the property is adjacent to the property that owns the sign? If it's on the front of the building, does it still pertain if the property, if the adjacent property is behind the building? I mean, there's a lot of things that need clarification. Is the permit, is it, is it directly across the street if it bothers a... If you want to discuss that, we could start, I mean, if you want to discuss all that, we could start it, the discussion now, we could go through it one by one.
The only parts that change, if you look to the next few pages, the only parts that are different from what currently exists in our book and has since 2018 in the signed regulations is the full segment there, which says that only those are allowed for churches, school, and government, and then that's, so that was for residential. And then under the commercial is the item key on the, the last page of your packet, just saying that those, if any, because we have some commercial properties that are zone commercial right smack dab in the middle of full residential all the way around them, so technically they could put up a digital sign and annoy all of the people in their neighborhood because they are on commercial property, so this would take into account the complaints that would likely come from that.
So, how do you define the adjacent property?
Adjacent to, or adjacent is neighboring on the sides, and across would be across the street. I don't know if there's, does anyone else have a more unique definition?
I mean, I...
I don't anticipate lots of, any of those coming through because there are only a handful of non, non-commercial or industrial locations that are surrounded by residential. In fact, I think there are two currently in our zoning map.
I think there could be more discussion on this in the, in the work section that we can go through, and some of it, it's, I mean, I understand that. And then the highlighting is the amendment, then changes, I get that.
That's just additional additions.
Some of it means...
So, everything that's on this page is, I didn't do?
Only full, isn't it, the rest is already in the...
Because otherwise, what the problem was going to be, we'd have to tell them to take it down. Because they were already against the zoning rule. So, this amendment would give them the right to keep it.
With just the parameters of operational limits.
Rightness, no flashing, and certain things like that, so that, and then...
Were they aware of it?
Well, they never asked for permits, so I don't know maybe they ever, I don't know, maybe they didn't feel they needed it.
I have to recall whatever we even brought to our attention.
No, we just heard through residents.
Very fine.
But we do have a zoning thing on signs.
Yeah, I know we do, we have an ordinance.
Yep, we do. And so...
Okay, so, so Mike, I have a question. So, this one's so bright down Main Street, so, but what about the ones when you come into town? The flashing ones?
They're on the, they're considered commercial?
They're not in your town.
They're not in town by a...
Oh, you mean the speed limit signs?
Like the one by like A's Day and the one by like Swanson Complex and the one coming into town.
Speed limit signs?
That's a speed limit sign.
But those are like flashing, so wouldn't that be kind of a...
That would be for safety.
That's for safety, that's public safety.
That's just like our signs on the gas stations, those are all permitted.
Yeah, but that's for public safety.
That's, yeah.
What about, yeah, what about bunker sign there?
It doesn't flash.
You got a permit. And they're in a commercial, they're in a resident, I mean, they're in a zone commercial because it's our business part. So, they have, they are allowed to do a digital sign.
I, yep, so that's some, all the questions that they have that could be clarified before we make a quick decision on this.
Is that the, is that the map that we got at the candidate forum?
This is the zoning map that I had, Alex, or I had Michelle email this. Because I called Michelle and asked her if she could email this.
Okay.
So.
There you go. Well, I don't know if it is for everyone to see, oh, there you go. So, the concerted areas, obviously, all, R1 is residential one and residential two, which are multi-family, those are what would be applicable in this, what need to be effective. And mobile home is the other one, which we don't have currently, mobile home area. So, those, all residential areas at this point are not allowed a digital sign, and that includes Zion School and Church and South O'Brien and Dart Park and Malt Fields and whatever else, and all the other churches, well, the churches technically. So, if that's what you want to do, then, then that means that you are telling the existing ones who didn't know or didn't take proper action to turn it off and stop.
I'm not telling anybody, any existing, I'm asking for a workshop. So, so at least my questions that I have on here can be answered, that's all I'm asking for. Not asking anybody to do anything or have anything removed or unapprove of, I'm asking for a workshop so we can sit down and I can get my questions answered, that's all I'm asking for.
So, in the meantime, you want to turn the sign off then?
I said, all I'm asking for is a workshop to get my questions answered, how difficult is that?
Does anyone else need a workshop as well to get through this decision?
I don't.
I had thought to the next minute.
I had thought maybe, but when I got home, I rubbed up, highlighted portions of Yang that made more sense to me for a little bit, the second or third time.
I guess the only question I have, what is it, I mean, do you guys talk to the church yet? About like, can they, can the sign be...
Correct, yes, we've spoken to who actually made the sign, the programs.
Okay, like it can be, like the brightness can...
That's where this kind of came from, these nits and this information.
Is it the way it's functioning now within these regulations as far as light?
Well, I mean, we could ask them to turn it off because we didn't...
No, what I'm saying is, is the way, because they've turned it down, I think.
They have turned it down, they did.
But, but is it within these regulations?
I, we didn't check them, so it's just...
Same company that didn't saw him as doing president's area?
And that's already ordered, I guess, and so...
I thought it was going to be up, but it isn't yet.
They're waiting.
Oh, they're waiting?
So, did you get a permit for theirs though?
They have a permit, but technically we can't approve permit as it currently stands, even though another church has had it and has sent, so that's the concern, so I would, just because they follow the rules by asking permission, do we tell them no? And if you don't ask permission, you can still get it, that can't be, so we have a result.
They don't need to permit them. Yes, so they don't have to be allowed to have the permit.
Yes, but then technically they would be, fall under, it would be allowed, and then Zion will need to fill out a permit to continue to...
Because they haven't filled it out yet.
They have never done.
So, let me ask you, if they, if they, if the structure was there and they just replaced the insert, because that's what they did, then it's not a new sign, so is grandfathered in?
No. Different type of... If they just replaced it with what it was, it's just updating it that is allowed.
Updating is allowed because that's what they did, is updating.
But then if you follow the residential districts, off premises signs, meaning, so the church can't put up a sign that advertises JW's box, because it's not on, on location, it has to advertise who they are right there, you can't put up a sign in these, that's what off premises means. No sign may be lighted that impairs vision of any driver or no sign.
You're going too fast.
Damn, in section fifteen point five, under residential.
So, is that, so we're under residential district, R1 and R2, what page are you on?
Um, one seventy-seven. It's the zoning. So, it basically, all flashing internally illuminated or audible signs are prohibited in all residential districts, that's right there, bottom line, their sign is not allowed.
In their zone.
Because it's internally illuminated and it's in residential district.
They're in the residential. Off premises signs and billboards are not permitted in residential, so I see that. No sign may be lighted that impairs vision of the driver or motor vehicle, I understand that. Signs shall not approach over the right way. No sign may obscure or physically interfere with traffic, control signs, this out. Amusementation signs, all flashing internally illuminated or audible signs are prohibited in all residential districts. And that's in a residential district.
So, that right there would be in violation, so we could enforce them to remove it or just turn it off, whatever, but I'm not sure that's the best way to handle that.
No, that wouldn't be...
And now that a second location or a second business church has self-assed to do the same thing. same thing. Now we, clearly, we have to make a decision on what will be allowed. Will neither of them be allowed? Will one be allowed and not the other? Or will both be allowed with caveats? This is where I'm presenting that. And then allowing for a future other church or school or government entity, which are the only ones, other than a residential, as in a house, should be allowed in a residential area.
So, so the, so the amendment, amendment F, all flashings internally illuminated or audible signs are prohibited in all residential districts except internally illuminated signs are allowed for church, schools, governmental entities, and subject to the following restrictions. Restriction one, only two permanent type signs will be permitted for development, of which only one freestanding sign will be permitted for development.
So for example, say the church itself is, are you counting it, what you count as one entity, there's church and school, so the church has one that's freestanding right now, they could technically still put one on the school side for some reason and have a school. And they are allowed that, but it is per development, meaning not just one thing. Otherwise, the church could put one up, the school could put one up there.
So development would mean-
The entire entity of their property, like-
Church.
Church and school, that whole group. Just like the school, you don't want the school to have one on the junior high, one on the FFA section, although that would be awesome, and one for the gym, and one for the, because they're all different parts of the school, you would say it's per development. So that would give them the two total, one freestanding and one on the side of the building. Thinking ahead, they have not asked for that. And they may, I don't think that's necessarily part of the plans yet, in the new development even, but it could come up. So this is allow, a way to not have to make that, cross that bridge again, or have a problem where they put it up and they don't, and they hope they were supposed to ask.
So it could have one free, it, it, so for example, Zion, since they have the church and the school, they could have two illuminated signs?
One freestanding, one on the side of the building, tops together as one entity there, one development. As, as it is zoned here, you see it's, well, it only says school on here, but. We don't zone church separately out, but.
Okay, number two, all signs shall have fixed images, no illumination, be intermittent, flashing, revolving, or animated. So, so does that mean they, so can they move from one screen to the next?
Long as it doesn't flash.
Yeah, just not crazy, you know, annoying sign work, which you've seen everywhere, ones that, ones that have that versus ones that are just standard signs, like a billboard, where it would just then convert to the next screen or a slideshow, which is-
So that sign there, I have seen that they have, so does that mean, so does that fall under the revolving? Cause it does go from one page to the next page to the next page. Is that considered a revolving image?
I think they're talking about something that moves.
On the one screen, like something spinning, basically-
Well, one set screen and there's something moving.
The state has one, one size, the same thing. Now we have digital billboards out in South Dakota, even Sioux Falls has tons of them, so the screen will change itself. They can't make an animated video that will cause you to stare at it and crash into your, the person in front of you. Same thing, you can't have motion or too long of a, an image or an action that is taking too long for more than three seconds for you to-
So what they have there would not be considered revolving?
No, most of what they've done is just changing to the next slide. They just can't go crazy and flash rainbow colors at all hours of progress.
So that includes text, or if the text is moving, is that, is that revolving?
I think everything that puts out is, is fixed.
Yeah, it's fixed.
Yeah, it's not moving. That's they're talking about, like it has an animated rabbit running across or, you know, or something.
No, I get the animation.
So scrolling sign is like the, our LED sign at the corner at the, at Broadway here in Maine, I mean, on Main and the Boulevard. That's an LED scrolling, meaning you have to wait for it to read the whole time. That's not allowed, that kind of thing.
For that, for churches and that type of stuff.
It doesn't, it is a business and commercial item.
Yep.
But that would be that kind of revolving.
Just wanted to clarify that. So if it's text that's moving, then it can't be, it's not allowed.
Kind of like the, you know, be a good neighbor. They're a neighbor to non-church and school areas, so they need to think about their neighbors.
Number three, signs are limited to sixteen square feet in size for churches and governmental entities, and twenty-one square feet for schools. So what would be the difference there? Why would they need, why would the-
Probably theirs are for scoreboards or something like that, for a school.
It doesn't specify scoreboards here.
Well, that's school. Where else are you gonna have a scoreboard?
I, I mean, these are some of all the questions that I have.
So in general, I think four by four, if you think so, size of sixteen square feet, that's four feet by four feet, which is kind of about what they have. They might even have less than that right now. Zion, typical church sign. So thinking of that, that size, would that look appropriate on the side of the new giant enhanced school?
I'm just asking why the sixteen square feet is different for the church than it is for school?
Cause the school is bigger, I guess? I don't know. That's just, would you like it to change?
That's what I'm asking, why is it that way?
Why can't it be that way?
Did you get this from some other place?
We did, from, what's the name of the, I'd be interested.
Why, why is it that way? That's my question.
Cause there must have been a reason.
Just because.
We can make it the same if you are asking that, would be all of them limited to sixteen square feet?
They're not picking on the churches.
Never said that. This, I said that my question is, why is it different for the school? And but it's in the original, um, it's in your-
Is that stated in the original, too?
Yeah.
It tells you about the size, the height, how far they can project out, and yes. Wall mounted signs can project out, the base of the building, no more than twelve inches, or about the roofline, more than four feet. At the same two permanent type signs per development is part of the current commercial, on page seventy-seven. A lot of this is still already in here. Total allowable size not exceeding a hundred square feet, total aggregate not more than two hundred and fifty square feet for the property. Billboard type signs.
So then, uh, let's go to number four, brightness of signs from seven AM to six PM. And it's limited to the five thousand and eighteen. We don't know what that is, or do we? Do you have a conversation?
Internet?
Oh, I'm sorry. In particular, the, the sign down at Zion, what is, what is the NIT on that? Do we know?
Well, probably it's got, if you wanna go bigger, you can go full on LED or walls or screens, which can be between one thousand or five thousand or more. These are great for stages and screens. Indoor screens like digital billboards can be about two thousand, while outdoor can go as high as eight thousand or more. So this is giving you a ballpark of what number base you're in. So limited to five thousand fits you right there in between, up to the, not as high as the highest, eight thousand.
Possibly to be between one thousand and five thousand NITs there during the day, but we don't know what it is. And then so, on number five, the brightness of signs also from six PM to nine thirty PM is limited to five hundred NIT. But what if, um, and see that, yeah, that should be in the permit, they should know that. But on businesses, and then signs must be turned off hours nine thirty to seven. Nine thirty PM to seven AM. And that's in residential. Commercial is the same way. Are we gonna make commercial?
This is commercial that is adjacent or facing residential. Otherwise, all other commercial has not those rules.
Okay.
Full capability to advertise all hours.
So, okay. So yeah, we, so if, I understand that, but we're gonna make them. Okay, so now let's go to commercial. So for example, if we, if we do that, Casey's is directly across the street from residential. So do they have to turn their sign off at nine thirty to eight?
Probably. Have they zoned differently in our, in our map?
I thought it's-
So are they grandfathered in?
Service stations do have different rules.
Yeah, stations and stuff are okay.
Service station, yeah, on hand on page seventy-eight, service station, somebody limits three square feet, they have each line of foot, street footage occupied, or there's one at Willow and Street, it can be a word of that.
Their grandfathered in.
But they're not, they're just illuminated signs, they're not a flashy, yeah.
It stays there.
Yeah. If they changed it, that would be, that would have to jump in. Or rezone that.
Target, we'll tell Lori.
Yeah.
If it starts flashing, you need to go out.
Target.
Target, I think they dropped that.
The new one, is it? Or is that the, yeah, there's two streets, two houses. Yes, they already are, they're C2, so you're good. Casey's does not apply.
Okay.
C2. So they are fully zoned on their neighboring, yeah, still on the park. But again, it's not an internally illuminated sign, it's a lit sign, yes, but. I mean, some might say backyard, back security light is offensive, you have to turn that down. Because that probably shines in some people's bedrooms, a little bit of blinding. So it's just a matter, in general, we need to take into account now that technology is making it a lot brighter than it used to, we need to be prepared for adjusting a twenty-eighteen version of the rules.
It's kind of a courtesy thing, too.
Yes, exactly.
I agree.
Because that thing was bright down there. And there's no need for it to be that bright, because the only time you're gonna see it is when you drive by, and that. And there's plenty, that's plenty of light that's evidence.
So the Legion is considering a digital sign?
Are they in city limits?
They are in city limits.
They're C2.
They're C2.
Do they work directly adjacent to or across from residential?
They are.
They are adjacent to a residential, yeah?
They are, to the east, to the west of them.
I didn't think that was residential, I thought that was commercial.
It's actually not in city limits, so that actually wouldn't apply to that.
Yeah, it's a residence, but where, I mean, so does it, I mean, where does, where is that defined?
It's on the map. They don't fit in city limits. They're in county.
They're in the county.
They don't apply to our-
All that, total, clear to the corners, county.
No, not the full county. No, no creatures.
No, but the Mike's buildings and stuff are in the county.
Yeah, Mike's and then that's there.
Yeah, so that's not defined in this amendment. I'm saying that's not defined in this amendment.
You can't, we can't rule on county property.
County property.
So we can only rule on anything R1.
Isn't that, so it should be defined in this amendment?
You can't rule on-
We can't do anything for county.
So in that case, if the Legion is looking at it, the Legion is in C2, so they have to follow C2 rules. And does it apply to, are they next door to residential in the city limits, R1 zoned? That would be a no, so they would be allowed to do a sign, following the permit, following the rest of the commercial residential rules, the C2 general rules for commercial, industrial, and ag districts.
Okay, so adjacent or across the street from property zoned is residential.
They only get one sign per development.
That's residential district. So that, so they wouldn't be zoned as residential, whether it is a residence. Okay, that would, that would take care of that, yes. And then would they be limited, so the Legion, would they be limited to that sixteen square feet?
Uh, no, because theirs is, it's got other rules if you follow the rest of the general sign. If you read on your page two where it says it has the limits of sign, and one freestanding sign, and one of a hundred and fifty from the thing, the total aggregate area, these are already existing. Remember, I was reading the two hundred and fifty square feet of the property. Billboard type signs of one of the two hundred square feet must be set back from the right way. They have all those rules already, existing. If they wanna put it on the side of the building and project it out, they have rules, they have the same rules. So they would have to come get a permit, too, if they are so involved in that, I'm sure they know that.
So the commercial and industrial, what page, what page, where it starts off, all commercial and industrial?
Yeah.
They would fall under that category?
They are C2. Downtown one, all other outside, outbound ones are C2. Industrial parks are G1, GI, industrial. Got our ag pieces. And R2 is multifamily, apartments, 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 and condos.
Okay, so the Legion would be okay?
In Casey's technically is too, unless they put up an internally illuminated digital LED type sign that's going to do changing messages and such, because they are surrounded by residential.
And then they would have to turn their sign off between hours of nine thirty and seven AM?
If, if they have an illuminated sign. I'll make a motion to amend the zoning ordinance, Article fifteen, Zion Regulations on Restrictions for Digital Signs in Residential and Commercial Districts per street.
Okay, Jase introduced the amended ordinance for a first reading, ordinance number thirty-six. Does this motion have support?
I'll second.
Jean, that was you?
Mm-hmm.
Jean has ordered the motion to amend, the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Polina by amending provisions pertaining to sign regulations, as in the stated ordinance number thirty-six. Do you have any other further discussion or questions unanswered?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll call for a roll call vote.
I'm Steve Hare.
Hey.
Carol Hopcomb.
Hey.
Jay Jones.
Yay.
Lexi Murphy.
Yay.
That was tricky, it should be I's, so the sound didn't-
Hi.
Okay. So I have all the way out.
Hi.
Thank you. That sounded way too much the same. All right. So that first reading is ready because we had forty-one, eyes approval of Renace. All right. Yeah, what does that leave us with? Oh, time. I'm nineteen, approve additional investment to complete the dead disease tree removal in parking.
Last meeting we talked about, we'll use that thirty-five thousand from the vehicles we spent, and we're gonna talk about it again, see where we're at at this council meeting. Say we probably have a week left-ish, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. We have added trees throughout the process, so the original number, we just found a tree today, that's a maple tree that's cracked down the trunk that we're probably gonna have to take out, which is a very big one.
And it's on parking, too?
It's on parking. It's on parking.
Where's that one?
Well, you gotta get it done.
Over on Village. So...
But we have no idea if this is even gonna cover it, are we?
The twenty-seven five?
Yep. So, should we wait until we get everything, or do we wanna approve it in between? I mean, I'd just as soon see it at the end, but I don't know.
But you're thinking, we might see it at the end.
When he's all done, you give us a bill. Are we all, are we doing a stocking?
Yeah, I'm like, you're gonna approve it after the back, then, yes. I'm very good.
Well, I mean...
Where are we getting the funds from?
About the council.
How good are you making omelets, Kelly? Oh, we have a fundraiser.
We have done quite a bit in the electric side, but we have not done, we have not had to purchase really a whole lot, because we buy it all on hand. So, I'm sure there's...
You feel there's dollars in there somewhere, huh?
There's dollars in the electric fund.
Okay.
It's like, it needs to be done.
Oh, amen. So, what about the ones in the power lights, though? How's that, that's something you guys are doing in the winter, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that.
Right.
I don't know if we wanna go, you know? Maybe, I don't even know. I don't know what number to say.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, too.
I think, yeah, it should just say up to and then put in a number that is, so that he doesn't stop. But if he does, he said he will take all of that early. We give him a decent number.
I mean, we can figure out where, every day and how much we got left and, I mean, we talk, I talk to them every day multiple times.
Because you've already paid enough, twenty-two thousand, that we approved tonight.
Yep.
And we were up to what? So, before, so we still had some left there, but now you know you've used that all. Plus the thirty-five, you said.
Because I remember we said that was about two weeks' worth of, he's done that's our last meeting. So, here we are. He did come and talk to us today. He wanted to be here, but it was too confusing in the meeting for that, to tell him quickly to get here to talk. So, we just wanted to let, you know, yes, it's still a concern, the risk is there. The trees are very dead here compared to other places where they're still green. And so, if this were two years ago, you could probably table a few and do another batch, but we figured going into winter and...
Most everywhere else, they're taking trees down. Like Sheldon, they took a hundred trees down and they were all live green trees. We don't have live green trees.
We don't have that option, or they're all dead, no, we didn't.
And they said they were looking at doing six hundred over there. I seen it again the other day. So, I don't know.
I'll make the emotion that we approve another thirty grand? Or do we do the twenty-seven five?
Why don't we just do what she's got down here? Why, we can't really change it, can we?
No, you can change it.
You can change it. You're making the, the decision. It's still approving an additional investment. You just changed the number. And I would just say up to, so that if he, if he doesn't spend it all, you're still covered.
I'll make the emotion that we up to thirty grand. That'd be my motion.
I'll second that. And then...
Okay, you have no questions?
Yeah, and then we, we would fund it out of the electrical, uh, department.
All right, so we've had a motion, Lexi, to second by Steve, to approve an additional investment up to thirty thousand dollars with the money coming out of the electric fund. Is that fairly accurate? Okay, then all in favor of approving that additional up to thirty thousand dollars to remove dead disease trees, to complete the, hopefully, complete the dead disease tree removal in the parking out of the electric fund, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes heard. And carry funds to be... It is a depressing way to spend money, but it is a one, hopefully, in a decades, lifetime situation that we have to deal with it. So, let's plant a diversity of trees, so we don't have as many of the same kind. Okay, now we're twenty. Now that we have all these trees down, we have stumps and we have grinding, we have trees. And Kelly has an idea to get them taken down without burning them all for the next two years, which it may take.
There is a guy in Simpley, he just bought a grinder. He said it would be, he just bought the thing, but he said two fifty to three hundred dollars an hour, just while the grinder's running. He has two trucks and he would haul them to, he'd have to go to Chandler, South Dakota. So, we figure he'd get four loads done a day. So, and when he came two weeks ago, he said, what was there, he could probably get half done in a week, so, I mean, he could probably get it done in two, three weeks.
So, he wants seven thousand?
That was just my, I'm just figuring that thing running two to three hours a day and...
So, he would grind them all one day and then do...
He's gonna load two trucks and go to Chandler, South Dakota, come back with the trucks, and then load two trucks and go to Chandler, South Dakota. His goal would be to get four trucks a day.
So, he's gonna grind the whole works, stuff, I mean...
He said he would take, anything he can't grind, he would take back to his shop and cut it down, so he can burn it in his shop or whatever, so...
Okay.
So, he's grinding the ones you got laying over there?
Yes.
Okay. And he uses that for something that he's got?
I think in Chandler, South Dakota, they use it for an ethanol plant for, in the wintertime, instead of using gas, they use, they burn the... Chips.
Will we still be burning some of it or not?
Yeah. We've, we've been burning.
I know you've been burning some, yeah.
So, you've been hauling already out some, too? So, but we pay him to grind?
Just while the grinder's running, we get charged.
Okay. Does he doesn't pay us, though, for using our nice wood out there, huh?
If you wanna, no. I mean, if you wanna keep, if you wanna keep the wood, he said it'd cost us more money because, then he's not getting the product to sell in Chandler.
Well, that's what I think. We should be getting, why are we paying him? He's getting something out of this, too.
Yeah, that's how it works, so...
I know. I know, it's idea. We're, look at this money we're putting out here. So...
But he can't, this doesn't have to be decided right away either, because the Chandler, South Dakota, only takes, I'm at certain times, and he said it'd probably be a month before he could start anyway, so...
So, we can look at it again? And maybe you'll have all the trees done by then?
He can come and look again and see what he thinks.
Yeah, see what he says. Let's just do that, then.
Table it, table it.
Yep. Do I need to make a motion to table it?
I'll make the emotion that we table item twenty.
I'll second it.
Okay, Lexi's made the motion, and Carol has seconded to table item twenty. Correct, yeah, item twenty, which is to approve the stump grinding estimate in hopes of getting up to date more numbers and waiting, we're closer to when you could actually do it. Anyone have any questions related to that? All in favor of approving tabling the stump grinding estimate, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion tabled, item tabled. Okay, now we have to repair and replace a city slide. This twisty tornado slide.
It's not that big.
Turbo twister. That's what she called it.
That most kids will...
They all do. Knock each other down.
Push each other.
And that was all rule? Or is it, I guess I have that.
It's cracked at the, where they bolt together.
Oh, yeah, and what did you say, it's older than three of our employees?
Yes.
That's how we put the title on it.
It's nineteen ninety-eight, so...
It's over the...
Is that the only thing we have to, because there's been a few other things.
Well, that, uh, that Plexiglas you looked through, that's on that quote, that...
Yeah, but isn't there also something further by the, the little stuff? Wasn't there a couple of things that got...
Well, we just pulled that stuff out.
Yeah, I know. We need to replace that.
I mean, we could replace it with something.
You know what? There used to be some of these little ladies groups years ago that used to, I don't know if we even have any right now, but that would have donations and stuff that they put together to help fix the park, or, you know, bring in stuff. So, maybe we should check if there's any organization out there that might wanna look for some money for us.
In the spring, look into that grass, that one, point it out.
Yeah. Anybody gonna get killed on this slide as it is now?
Because they're already planning on it.
No.
Okay.
But it's out of, I mean, we can't, we have to do something about it.
And put crime scene tape up, but they'll still go through it.
Is that something that you can just take down for the winter and you'll deal with, you guys will deal with it in the spring?
I mean... I mean, they're gonna be, I don't know, I mean, we, we could board it up somehow.
Is it something I shouldn't be playing on? I mean, is it dangerous to that effect, or...
No, but, I mean, it's, it's not dangerous or nothing right now, but it's, you know, on those seams there, these seams here, where it's bolted together, those are starting to crack. It's not at a point where it's, I would say, dangerous, but it's at a point where we need to do something.
Right.
And I looked over everything else, and everything else seemed fine.
I think it would be nice to be getting something in the boat area, too. I don't know what those things are, but I don't think ours redoing a bunch of theirs. I seen some of that going on.
They got the, will be CCS, right?
Oh, they use some of that for that, okay. And that would be a good one for us to put this in for. Maybe we should, we can do that, because that's Article fifteen. Through the winter, you're not gonna be putting it in anyhow, because I don't know how long it takes to get it, either.
Forty-five weeks, it says?
Yeah.
We just budgeted some for parks?
Did.
We what?
We budgeted some for parks, some...
Yes, we always do, I have to look at what, and some of that, we might be something up like tree stuff, too, but...
Oh, yeah, because we have trees in the park that need to come down.
Yeah, there's a couple of those that have to go.
Technically be thankful there, but it's a table.
So, what do we wanna do?
We can...
Can we table it?
Table this for now?
We can table it till next meeting.
And then find out if we have a budget.
I'll make the emotion that we table item number twenty-one.
Okay.
Culture up there.
Parks.
Oh, running to.
How much?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two's in parks and thirty-two's in...
Well, you were thinking to do that.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yeah. Yeah, we were thinking to do that. Yeah.
That was right.
We never got that done.
That is not, we never said to make the investment.
What's that?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a safety issue.
Yeah, so if we have that in the budget, we can approve this.
Somebody's getting this in here.
Do you want to, well, we didn't vote on it yet.
No, she made a motion to table.
I'll extend my motion.
Finish that.
Okay. So, what do we have on the table? Nothing?
No.
We're tabling the table. What are we doing here? With item?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Approve, repair, replace the park, city park slide. We are...
Do you wanna replace sections of it, Kelly? Or do you wanna replace the, the entrance and the exit section also, along with it?
You would look at the whole thing, weren't you?
Yeah.
Is that the whole slide, you, from the top?
Yep, from the top down.
I believe that we approve the repair, replace of the city slide. And take the money out of the parts.
Okay, Jase made a motion to approve the repair of this slide based on what Kelly provided and using parks and rec money. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Carol, second.
So, we're gonna repair or replace whatever you feel needs to be done, right?
Okay, so we have that's on the table. Any other further questions related to this estimate or timeframe or the slide itself? Then, all in favor of approving the repair of this slide in the park for the seventy-five, forty, and eighty-four cent quote? Say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say nay? All ayes. Carry this slide to be repaired. We need it where we got, okay. All right, so we, um, I was gonna say there were election results. For those of you who were unaware, there was an election, and Marlon is to be our manager. He's here today. Hello, Marlon. And Jean was re-elected to council, and Nicole and Jenny are the other two council members. So, congratulations. Yay. Aren't you excited to get coming more of these long meetings? It's Thanksgiving.
That means pick up agenda, Marlon.
You soft your chairs, but these are less secure.
These are much better. We hit home Thanksgiving week, and then the week after that, we have hometown Christmas before we meet again, so that is Friday, the first and second. There's a lot happening around here. Hopefully, all of you will attend in some fashion, or volunteer, even better. And the office will be closed here Thursday and Friday this week. All of their employees will have the days off for family time. And that is all I have for that.
You're doing department reports?
Yes, we're still having, and then we've got Tisha's on next. Everything's updated, so I'm right now, yeah? Kelly, I know you've got a lot to talk about already, but you have probably just a few more things.
Well, we have been doing electric progress. We got the house, the new house done. We're working on the block going from, on Grohl Spec, from Harker to Wood Street. Get that underground. Gonna work on the streetlights. Got Mahler, Josh Mahler's old house. We got utilities all disconnected, and we did dig down to the, our water shut off and disconnected there, because they're gonna be tearing that house down, and we just don't wanna yanking and pulling or anything on those lines, so that's disconnected. We got some streetlights, we've been doing stump grinding, cleaning that stuff up.
Can I have a question for you, Kelly?
Sure.
In the backyard where Frank Hettinger lives, there's a dead ash tree. And if that thing comes down, it's gonna take the wires off from, do, can you talk to them and see about having them get that down, or is that...
Can you talk to them, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, Michelle had surgery today. I haven't heard how it went, so she'll be out for a while, but I'll be here.
Sound before, good vibes. Need help, Kelly?
Yeah, I will.
You're happy you're gonna have two days of holiday, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
I'll bless you.
Yeah.
All right, we do not have Nathan on tonight, I don't think, and Ryan has the absence. Lori was already here. Matt, time for your department.
Yes, just thank you for approving our new board members. We're excited to have them on the board. Nothing new terribly to report, besides just being closed on Thanksgiving Day. Then we'll be closed Christmas Day as well, close our next couple holidays. And then that, appreciate the help from Alex and Michelle as we go through monthly things. And then, yeah, snow stuff for the street, thanks. Looking forward to, hopefully, you're not having to help a lot, but...
Okay, any questions for him, Marlon's here? Airport number four, and employee, any committees met? I know, I think employees are up for some reviews, so committee will need to handle that. Anything else coming up? Schedule your meetings and post your notices. Okay, council comments.
I'll make the emotion that we adjourn.
I was gonna say, let you go home.
Yeah.
Lexi and Steve on... Lexi and Steve on the motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, unless there's some problems, say aye. We're getting adjourned, eight P M on the dock.
Ayes and some with you, aye. Just so you know. Just so you know. I know I'm getting a headache, so I know I'm.